As for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I appreciate everybody coming in today. I do have a couple announcements and a couple statements. At the top, I just want to ask our fellow supervisors, are you comfortable with having our committee presentations move to the front of the agenda so that they can provide their reports and leave if they would like?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you. Thank you.
If they're brief.
I believe they're brief. I believe they are brief.
Because we want to hear them, but briefly.
Yes. Also, I just want to make sure everybody's aware there's a sign up sheet for public comment in the back. If you want to make a statement, please make sure you sign up on there. For public comment, the limit is two minutes to speak. And I ask, if you're asking questions, that you just ask the questions, I'll take notes to see what the questions are, and then that way we can have them responded to once rather than multiple times. I also will be adding a public comment section right above the Easton Road Heart Property Agenda item, so the first public comment will be without that. The second one, right around the time that we do the Heart Property discussion, that's when we'll be taking comment on that. I also would like to inform everybody, I've been keeping an eye on what the conversations have been going on in the community related to the property. I do want to let everybody know that we are not voting on whether we're going to change zoning today. That is not what is on our agenda for today. What we're going to be voting on is whether we're going to be sending this to the Planning Commission so that they can do some analysis for us to see if it makes any sense. So if, I want to make sure that you guys have all the time that you need, but I want to be respectful of your evening, so if you have public comment related to that, that will be coming up in the Planning Commission meeting in the future.
Madam Chair, if I may, and with the Planning Commission, that is an open public meeting, which you are allowed to go to and share your views on the project as well.
Right. I also would like to add that there was an agenda item that was pulled off of our agenda. It is the
Furline.
Furline property, so we will not be having that on our agenda this evening.
They're just asking for an extension in time, though.
They will be asking for an extension, but we're not going to be discussing it in any great detail. So, thank you.
Jen, can I ask, sign up, the sheet is like 12 people. Is there any reason why we couldn't extend it to three minutes since it's not that many people?
No, we're going to keep it at two minutes. We'll keep it at two minutes. That's our protocol, so.
I just want to say, I think the fact that so many people out, I think it's important to give people an opportunity. And sometimes people get nervous in front of a camera and in front of a microphone, so that was the reason I asked to extend that time so they could be comfortable.
I appreciate it, but we do have a very full agenda. I hope everybody appreciates that. We need to make sure we have a proper amount of time. You can always come, like I said, with this, if this is about the Heart Property, we will be having comments at the public meeting for the Planning Commission. Once it's in their hands, if we do vote to do that today, they would have a lot more detailed information for you at that point. Announcements, oh, sorry, public comment on agenda items without the Heart Property. Let me see what we have here. Ms. Davies, I see you have something, I see you have something on here that it says, I think it says Heart and Well. Is there two separate topics? Would you like to just come up and make your public comment about Well and then Heart at the end?
Yes, right now.
Sure. Just non-Heart. Thank you.
I just came here to say something about the Two Wells and Doylestown hunt, and I realize this is a project to replace, and there's some work being done. And I did contact Brett Eaton at the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority on last Friday, and I had a wonderful conversation. He called me right back. He was very prompt about it. And the reason I called is because several, many people in the neighborhood had no idea what was going on, because the township had only notified or sent a letter to only a handful of properties. And the wells affect everyone in the development, the two wells. So I called to respectfully ask that whatever letters of communication that were sent to the few residents be sent to everyone in the development. That way also, on your end, there's less speculation and rumors and misinformation. We would like to get the same letters that were sent to those particular residents, because the wells affect the whole community, the whole subdivision. That's all I ask. And thank you very much for the gentleman who called me back from the Township Municipal Authority last Friday. I really appreciate it. That was my request, and I look forward to having that letter from, well, for all of us to have the past letters and also any future updates and writing to the residents that are affected. Thank you very much.
Ms. Davies.
Mr. Brenn's right there, second to the end.
Ms. Davies, one other thing, Ms. Davies, before you sit down. I know your name, but could you say your name and
Oh, Mary Ann Davies, Doylestown Township.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you again.
Stephanie, to clarify, is that a letter we send out or DTMA sends out?
I believe that was a letter that DTMA sent to the folks on Stags Leap who were directly impacted by the construction work that was going to take place on Stags Leap.
Noted.
Okay, without any other public comment, let me go on to announcements. The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, July 15th, at 7:00 PM in this room. The Doylestown Township Administrative Office will be closed on Friday, July 4th, for the observance of Independence Day. The Thompson Performing Arts Series at CNN Amphitheater continues this Wednesday, June 18th, at 7:00 PM with Soul Cruisers. Please go to our webpage, doylstownrec.org, for the complete 2025 lineup. Doylestown Township Police is holding the National Night Out event. It is a wonderful event. Please come. It's a family-friendly event. It's on August 5th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Central Park. You can find out more information by going on our webpage at doylstownpa.org. And you can keep up to date with township news and events by signing up for the e-news at doylstownpa.org. It comes out every Friday at 4 o'clock, and it has a lot of really good information on the township and what's going on. Next on the agenda, minutes approval. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to move to amend the attendance and note that Ms. Santa Cecilia logged off the meeting at 7:33.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I also wanted to amend that on this, in this meeting, and I understand that this is a summary of what happened, but I did log into the meeting just specifically for this topic. And one of the things I had stated, which I'm a little unclear why it wasn't mentioned, is that when this was presented to the Planning Commission, they had sent it back saying that the idea of the Bucks County Alms House redevelopment locked the infrastructure, and it was too narrow, didn't look at the full comprehensive plan. And so I appreciate what was summarized, but I think it's missing a few details. I'd request in the future that when I make a statement about it, that it be included.
Okay, so the motion is to amend the minutes.
I move to approve with that amendment.
I mean, you can leave them. I'm just saying in the future.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the budget work session minutes for June 3rd?
Move for their approval.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Under correspondence, we received a commission resignation from Mr. Aglow. He was, he served on our zoning hearing board.
He moved to the borough.
Yes, he moved to the borough. We would like to thank him for his service and wish him well in the future.
I'm it.
And that makes a vacancy on.
And that does make a vacancy on.
We will advertise for that vacancy.
For that vacancy, correct. The Bucks County Conservation District also requested our support for grant application.
I move for the approval of supporting the Lake Colina Watershed Implementation Plan and Letter of Support.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the Tile Works is looking for a waiver of $150 fee for their, for their event.
Renaissance Fair, August 30th to September 1st, and move for the approval of waiving of the fee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Solicitor reports?
Nothing to report.
Township engineer?
Nothing to report, but I do have plans that will require signature at the end of tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, real quick, I just want to announce to everybody that we're going to continue with our scam awareness program. We did make contact with the Central Bucks Senior Center, so keep a lookout on our Facebook page and our Crime Watch page for the advertisement. We're still working on some dates, but it's been pretty successful so far.
Thank you. All right, Director of Operations?
Okay, I'm going to start with the road evaluation presentation. I just have a few brief slides I'd like to
I'm sorry, I did not move our committees up to the front of the agenda.
Can we do that now?
Why don't we do that now? I'm going to be moving all their committees' presentations up to the beginning.
Hold that thought, Dave.
So, thank you. So, Mr. Kelso is here for the Bike and Hike Committee for the presentation.
Good evening. I think I have some slides here.
Yep, they're up.
The past year has been a good year for Doylestown Township and their Bike and Hike Program. Number one, we completed the Shady Retreat Path. That path was being used before the asphalt cooled. I think everybody, everybody knows that, saw that in the progress of that development. It went smoothly. We had a great contractor, and it serves a lot of people in the township. It's probably one path that we put in that serves the greatest number of people. I don't know why it's jumping through the slides like that. They said they would help me if that happened, but let me just move on. The slides aren't that important.
There we go.
There it comes back again. The Easton Road Connector, this is the path that we've been working on for years that connects Central Park over to Easton Road. It's on your agenda tonight for bid approval. The bid came in under, under the estimate by $70,000 or so. Is it not on the agenda?
It is, but it's your New Britton Road. I think one of your slides went a little quicker.
Oh, yeah.
Or maybe
We got it.
Yeah, New Britton Road, yeah. That's okay.
So it's another accomplishment, I think, that's been in the work a long time, but finally will be constructed this year and maybe into next year a little bit. The Easton Road Connector, this is the road, this is the trail that'll connect basically from where we have our trail in the Wawa and South Main Street down to the existing trail at Tabor. That's funded, it's under design. Construction won't happen until late next year, I would assume. It's, we're sort of working on some other things right now and letting that one sit there for a while. The Pebble Hill Road Project, that was one of our early priorities back 30 years ago, and it's one of the difficult ones, and that's the reason we're digging in on it now. We want to move it a step forward. We've been meeting with the residents. We've got, we need about five easements. We have one from the country club. We need about five residential easements, minor easements between the road and their property, into their property a little bit. We, we have a proposal from Baker, I think for $30,000, to do the easements. What we're asking the board is to allow us to get out, go out and get some competitive bids, maybe from local surveyors, because it's that type of work. So we'd like to hang on to that proposal, bring a couple more to you for your decision in the next month or so. But that'll help us move. We have a grant from Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission that allows Baker to work for us at their cost. There was no, no funds involved in that. And what it is, it allows communities to help prepare to submit a grant. So when the grant goes in, it's complete, it's approvable. We don't, they don't have to worry about, are we going to get an easement or not? And that's the idea of this. So it'll take a while to get through this. We won't expect to have those easements till next year. But we're fairly confident that the property owners involved are in agreement with them. Wrong way on that. The, the other one that we're working on, and we've been working on it, we brought this to you last year, was the extension of the Pine Run Trail. And again, that's probably one of our top three or four used trails. It goes into New Britton Boroughs Park. We've, in the past year, we met with the county, and that'll be our second meeting with them. We met with the new park director. We met with the Pine Run Community staff. Stephanie and I went out and met with them. And both parties are very enthusiastic about that. And it's a fairly straightforward trail. We're showing it in a couple phases. The red line is what we call this phase, and it goes primarily through the woodland, connects onto the Pine Run Community, and ends at, ends at, I guess that is what, it ends at Pine Run Road. There's a sort of a parking area at the bend on Pine Run Road that I think the county would like to clean up, and that would be the first phase. It has the opportunity to, even that part, to be done in phases. And the first phase might be a woodland trail even, or something like that. It has the opportunity to use township staff, like we did on the Shammany Trail by Shelf on New Britton Plant, where they went in and during off times, they'd go in and clear the area. And as Paul was telling me today, they were using it as chainsaw training for the staff, which, come a big hurricane, you can't have too much of that. Everybody knows, has to know how to use a chainsaw. So our goal this year is to develop memorandums of understanding with both parties. They're the two key stakeholders in this other than the township. And the memorandum of understanding, there's an opportunity to explore participation and funding, too. And we talked about it at our Bike and Hike meeting this morning, that, you know, we started out this program 30 years ago doing things not the easy way. We, we did a lot of matching with kind services. I know I participated in that through my firm. And, you know, it's, this is a good one to look at that again and see how we can do that. And it's not something that's going to happen next year. It's something that's going to take us a little longer than maybe some of these do. But the nice thing about it, PennDOT's not involved. We don't anticipate a lot of permit that's needed. I know we'll need some environmental permits and everything, but that's, that's sort of our, the next trail in the pipeline. And, and that's it.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tom, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
So the path would lead straight to Pine Run Community Center, so the seniors would be able to also go out to the reservoir? Is that the understanding of that trail? That picture? I was just trying to understand it real quick.
Yeah, I'm not sure. What are you asking?
When that trail comes around, it'll just lead directly to the Pine Run Community Center? Or that community center, the Pine Run Presbyterian? Is that what the, is that where it ends?
That's, that's the Pine Run Community.
Okay.
And it could end there. That could be the first phase. At a minimum, we'd want to connect the Pine Run Community. And that would go from the existing trail that's shown in yellow across the dam breastwork, and then through the woods up to there.
So it'd be going through woods. My only, and I applaud the Bike and Hike, because they do an incredible job to really make it a place everyone wants to live and enjoy the trails. My only concern would be, well, actually two concerns, flooding and the environment, because there's the woods there, but also people having access and a safety point. So I'd ask you just to consult with the police if anyone can now have access to that community, because they do have doors, and I would just be concerned about anybody, them having to add more security or anything like that, because they would have access to that community.
Well, it's not the first time we've gone through woods with a trail. And, and really, in a sense, it gives staff, whether it's police or maintenance, access to those areas. And people are in those areas already.
Right. Well, I see, I mean, I walk that trail every day with my dog, and I know it quite well with the animals. We can talk later offline about it. I just would want to mention those things, but thank you.
I think it's in its early stages, and there are a lot of opportunities to make modifications, as we've always done with these trails.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Eaton, DTMA?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, supervisors. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brent Eaton. I'm the Executive Director for the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority. In 2024, DTMA added approximately 40 residential customers and connected two commercial properties to the public water system. DTMA also supported the new commercial construction taking place in the Barn Plaza and Cross Key Shopping Centers. DTMA continued to provide excellent water quality and reliability at an affordable price. Due to the continued growth and operational efficiencies, DTMA managed to keep water rates stable for an eighth year in a row. DTMA is very proud of this ongoing effort to keep rates stable for our 3,000 customers. DTMA monitored water quality daily and is pleased to report zero water quality violations in accordance with the Safe Drinking Water Act. DTMA continues to operate the Delaware Valley University Water System and provides clean, safe drinking water to the university on a daily basis. DTMA replaced approximately 15 fire hydrants throughout the water system as the old fire hydrants were approaching the end of their useful life. In 2024, DTMA completed upgrades at the Central Booster Station and the Shammany Manor Booster Station. Emergency generators and new pumping systems were installed at these locations. The improvements will allow these water facilities to stay operating during power outages, thus improving overall system reliability and performance for DTMA customers. Also in 2024, DTMA initiated the Cross Keys Booster Station upgrades. These upgrades include new domestic pumps, a new high-service pump, and a new emergency generator. These improvements were completed earlier this year. All these pump stations were upgraded due to increased customer demand and are equipped with the latest technological improvements. Finally, DTMA completed the design and bidding of the Central Wells 5 and 7 Treatment Upgrade Project. Funding for this project was provided through a $4.4 million grant in December 2024 through PennVest. This project will remove contaminants such as PFOS, iron, and manganese from these two wells. Construction has already begun with targeted completion slated for spring 2026. Looking ahead, DTMA is committed to providing clean, safe drinking water of the highest standards at a reasonable cost. Through capital contributions and public funding, DTMA will continue to meet and exceed regulatory requirements to improve water quality and reliability throughout the system. DTMA remains steadfast in our mission to construct and expand the distribution system as necessary to maintain the health, safety, and welfare of Doylestown Township residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
And we would also like to add
Yes.
Yes.
The drought restrictions have been lifted.
Thank you. Always end on a high note. Is Mr. Van Houten here?
Yes, he is. Right over there.
Oh, there you are. You're hiding, all right. For the Public Water and Sewer Board.
Also, as Chairman of the Municipal Authority, I would just want to say that Brent Eaton has done a phenomenal job, having taken over as Managing Director, as Keith Haas had moved on at the end of last year to take over running the North Penn Water Authority. So my hat's off to Brent for being able to have a very smooth and successful transition. The Public Water Sewer Advisory Committee, I guess you've heard us talk a lot about sewers over the years. Most recently, the 537 Plan, which is the roadmap to the future for sewers in the township, was presented to the state DEP. Just to give you an idea, this was the old 537 Plan. Just to give you an idea how many pages, it's like the size of an old phone book, for those that remember phone books, right? As of right now, we're just waiting for DEP to basically hand that back over to, with final completions. It's always a back and forth process with regards to changes and amendments. A lot of that's handled by Bucks County Water and Sewers, they manage the system. The one thing I am really very excited about is that we received a grant to do testing of private wells here in the township. Something that's been like a back burner thought for many years, and we had an opportunity within the last year to, to obtain a grant. You'll see more about that in the coming months as the, as we start to move forward with the executing that plan, sending out letters. It's going to be a random testing. We're going to try to test as many of the areas throughout the township to be able to get a really good understanding as to the quality of the private drinking water supply in the township. So more to come on that in the future. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Houten.
Just wanted to keep it brief.
Thank you. We appreciate it. For Environmental Advisory Council, Heidi Schreiber will be presenting. Hi, Heidi.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me this evening. I do have a presentation ready to go, and here it is. Great. Awesome. So I just want to share what we've been working on as our Environmental Advisory Council. We continue to be actively involved in a large range of projects, including anywhere from our native plant demonstration gardens to our climate action planning, residential, resident engagement and education about native trees and plants, deer, lighting, mowing, salt, and pesticide reduction, and so on. I'm going to get into a little bit more detail with the different slides. So our Central Park Native Plant Demonstration Garden, we had over 158 volunteer hours last year. This is, they're focusing in the past year on invasive plant removal and adding native plants. This is being led by Chad and Alice Marcy. She's reflecting and are master gardeners. She's reflecting and our master gardeners. They're also continuing care for our Native American native plant gardens. We also have the Central Park Pond. Jane Neal and her team have been working also removing invasives and adding native removing invasive plants and adding natives. They also work very nicely with this with our staff this year to remove larger invasive trees. And it's been four growing seasons, so it's really looking amazing. Also in that area is our floating native plant islands, and they're looking awesome, too. And Eric was really pleased to announce this year that all the plants survived the winter, which was great. He's also working to create larger ones for the future. We also have a program called the Native Plant Garden Guidance Program. We've had six total requests since the program launched. A big thank you to Chad and Marcello for leading this effort. Chad has also provided a beautiful design board for the native plantings for the Westwick HOA, which inspired additional native plants, and they've been doing throughout the neighborhood. We also have a Heritage Tree Shade Tree Commission Arbor Day Work. So part of the Greater Arbor Day Celebration, four native trees were donated by the Women's Farm and Garden Association in Bucks Beautiful, and they were planted in the Native Plant Demonstration Garden. Also, we received a Bucks Beautiful grant, which was super exciting to help pay for those trees. Also, for our Heritage Tree Program, which is led by Marcello, he's evaluated eight trees this year with six that are significant and two champions. We also have a new measuring tool, which is awesome for accuracy. And then finally, in November, we had a planting with 70 native plants, native trees, actually with 24 volunteers at the Sauerman Park. Ready for 100. So we have our Climate Action Plan, which will hopefully be voted on successfully tonight. We're also doing a solar array assessment for Turk Road to support the Pennsylvania Solar Center, which is using our work as part of their advocacy efforts. We also support the EV Charger Guidelines and help support the EV Symposium that was led by Judy to engage businesses. And we had a panel of experts, which included Kurt and Jim for our EAC as well. Birdtown, Pennsylvania, so we've been doing a lot of work under this program as well. I want to just especially highlight, because I only have five minutes, that we installed a bird-friendly demonstration garden, working with a local Girl Scout troop, Troop 2791. This is part of their Silver Award, and we planted a demonstration native plant garden with them. So the garden is all in now, looks amazing. The girls put a really awesome survey in to get some feedback from the community about what folks feel about it, and they'll be working on educational signage next. We also did bird window collision, focusing on this, working with the Del Valle Student to address bird window strikes at the Life Science Building. We also had here the bird window collision banner here in the township building. And we also participated in the Birds Save Doylestown Pilot, which started in March. And there's a whole bunch more, but I don't have a lot of time to talk about them. Oh, just one highlight, we did achieve Goldstat as for our Birdtown program here in Doylestown Township. Hooray.
Nice.
Also part of Birdtown, I'm really excited to say that we're working the PA Game Commission. They have a cavity nesting initiative. So we're reaching out to Stefan, who's going to be doing a site visit to see if we can find a place for the Purple Martin condos and Chimney Swift Towers. So Jim, thinking about you at the Purple Martins. So we'll see what happens there. Our watershed property projects, there's been two, Sandy Bridge and Ashway Water Basin, which was started in fall of 2022. I'm excited to say that project is pretty much completed now. We achieved 92% for passing score, and we planted over 100 native trees. A huge thank you to the staff for all their help and for installing a pet waste station. Also, the Sheridan Road project was completed in the fall of 2024. Again, a huge thank you to the volunteers and staff for the invasive tree removal, clearing the site, and planting trees. We also did a collaboration with our Parks and Rec Board. We supported their program, their holiday program in December with a fun bird game and pine cone bird feeder craft. We also distributed our cloth bag, celebrating the inflammation of the single-use plastic band ordinance. Additional work, we just completed our three-year strategic plan, which is a working document. We'll continue to add and change that. We have a new EAC rec card, thanks to Andrea. We also helped sponsor Doug Tallamet's event in April, working with the Bucks County Food Shed Alliance. And then finally, we have a number of things planned for the coming year. So thank you so much to everyone, to the staff, and to the board's supervisors for all your support for the Environmental Advisory Council.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Heidi.
Any questions for me? Any questions?
Love the bird.
You're a powerhouse.
Yeah.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
I just have to say, I did a walk through Central Park this weekend, and we walked through where the Native Plant Demonstration Garden is. It's gorgeous. It is such a beautiful time of year. Everything's coming together. Please, it's behind Kids Castle if you go over that bridge by the retention basin. It's gorgeous there. Please, please go visit. It's stunning. The next is Eric Cornwell for Finance Committee.
Finance doesn't have a lot of birds in its presentation. Eric Cornwell, Chair of the Finance Committee. Just to give everybody a summary of what we've done, really, the heavy lift was done by my predecessor to get the funding with the CRC. Generally speaking, we've helped staff develop the budget, at least try to poke holes in the budget, try to do that going forward as well. From projects going forward, we're looking into potential rebuild of Kids Castle, potential cost savings for life safety support, and some other projects that seem to be off in the horizon that we need to look at, you know, at least prior to us standing on top of it. So from that standpoint, most of our job is done behind the scenes, looking at numbers. Does anybody have any questions?
So the Finance Committee does a lot of work with our budget. They help us during budget season. They sit in on our budget meetings and give their advice and input. They're really helpful, and I appreciate all the work that you do.
Yeah, you really make our work easy.
No, that's not me. It's the brain power that sits on.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of our presenters today for our committees. They are all volunteer committees. If you're interested in joining any of them, please go to doylstownpa.org. There's plenty of work to do here, and we would love to have your input. And I'd definitely like to thank all of our volunteers for all the time that they put in. Okay, and on to our agenda item. Director of Operations, you can continue.
Okay. I'm going to briefly go over our road evaluation program with a short presentation here. If you've been through our budget work sessions or board meetings, you may have seen this before. We've in 2018, we basically embarked on what was called a robotics road assessment program. This is where basically partnered with a company by Nema Robotics. They basically went out and surveyed with basically a cell phone on the dashboard and took pictures of all the roads and the conditions, and they basically evaluate with an algorithm and assign a score to the road. So this is what the assessment looked like in 2018. You could see basically the green being number one and number one being the best rating, like a newly paved road. It's smooth, no potholes, no, no rutting, no cracking, things like that. Two, basically a score to five, which is worst, potholes, it's fallen apart. And you could see basically what we had was an overall score of 2.4 at the top there of that pie chart. And you could see approximately one-third of the township's roads, and we have about approximately 77 miles of township roads that we own and maintain. About a third was, you know, was really good. A third was, you know, was a little bit worse, and then basically a third needed attention. So then basically what we did is we went into and did another assessment in 2022, and here we are with that evaluation. And you can see we are overall rating of 2.3, so got a little bit better, but we still had some work to do. You could see some of the areas down in here where we had done the Pebble Ridge Woodward Sewer adjacent neighborhoods. Pay close attention to this whole area right here as I go to the next assessment. You'll see basically an impact of what we've done, and that was part of our Accelerated Road Program, where we basically paved a lot of these roads in this in this area. And you could see now, basically, we're up to a 1.6. Almost, you know, three quarters of our roads are, you know, scored at a one or a two. And so basically, we've got approximately, you know, 25% left to address. We're going to be doing more paving this year. And in the next agenda item, Mr. Torpe will ask for the approval for the bid for the road program this year. But you could see as we've done here is the basically the effort has paid off from even from from 2022 to 2024 evaluations, that we've really had an improvement in the in the quality of the roads in the township, and we're working hard to continue to do that. So any questions about our road evaluation program that we've done for the past number of years here? Okay?
Thank you.
And we're done with that evaluation. So I'm going to, next item is our 25 Road Program Award Recommend Award Recommendation. I'm going to ask Mr. Torpe to present this item, please.
Yep. So we went out to bid this year for our 2025 Road Program. We received bids from four qualified contractors. We're here tonight to ask to award the lowest qualified bid to James D. Morrissey in the amount of $727,697. This amount included our bid pricing, and we were able to award alternate bid item number two and alternate bid item number three.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Okay. Next item is the New Britton Road Bike Hike Trail Award Recommendation. As Mr. Kelso alluded to, this is the bike hike trail that comes out of the backside of Central Park on New Britton Road, goes down New Britton Road to Rolling Hill Boulevard, goes across the bridge, crosses over the 611 bypass, and ends just right after that bridge and ties into an existing trail that goes to Warden Lane. Bids were, this is part of a DCNR grant, so there's, that's how we're funding this project, as well as a match that we have to provide out of our own funds. The the project was bid and bids were received, two bids were received, and basically the low bid is Corn
A.H. Cornell.
Cornell, A.H. Cornell and Sons, I'm sorry. So basically, at the recommendation of Baker, who reviewed the bid documents for us, they are recommending the award to Cornell, A.H. Cornell and Sons for $462,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Steve, I'm sorry, can you just, I'm sorry, how many miles total did the road program? Sorry, when we approved that, what was the total mileage?
For this year?
Yeah.
I, do you know?
The 700?
I don't know the total mileage for this year. I can, I can find that and get that to you.
I think she meant total miles. You're in charge.
Total miles overall, just for this this award?
No, just this award. I was just, with that 700 got us.
Approximately, I would say, I'll get the exact number. I'm going to assume it's around three to three and a half at best.
Three, three and a half miles.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's important to note, though, that some of the roads that we're dealing with now are the roads that have the most repair needed. You know, they're
Exactly, and I get it. It's a variety of different reasons to determine.
These are roads that are costing a little bit more, so we're
Right, depending on
Yes.
How bad they are and, okay.
Okay, I'm all up to, New Britton Road Trail was awarded, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, my next request is for the Community Recreation Center US Solutions Change Order Number Five. Few items and coordination that we have to account for. We received a change order from US Solutions for power drops for the basketball hoops, rim height adjusters, and connection to the fire suppression system that have to be completed. So that change order totaled $13,280. I'm asking for the board's approval of US Solutions Change Order Number Five, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I apologize, I went out of order. Item number four on the agenda, change order for Skeptin. The request is to table that. I did not receive that information in time. We're still working through some numbers on that item, okay?
So, move to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next item for the Community Recreation Center is All Sports Change Order Number Two. Basically, this is actually a deduct and an add. We're deducting approximately 30, almost $38,000 of wall padding. That was supposed to, they assumed that they were going to put pads around the entire gym perimeter, and that was not the plan. And we also have approximately $900 in costs for some additional, what they call the X-bracing padding. So we're actually going to be receiving a credit on this change order for $37,015 from All Sports, documented in Change Order Number Two, which I'd like the board's approval for.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, this one is for the Central Park Restrooms. Herschberg Mechanical Plumbing Contract Change Order Number Four. We received an additional change
I'm sorry, Dave, did you skip the Lions Recreation, the
Because again, the request is to table that item because I do not have that information at this time.
Move to table.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you for that. My last item, then, is the Central Park Restrooms. Herschberg Mechanical Change Order Number Four. One of the items that did not get caught, but we were wanting to have been tied in, is the green room drain that is part of the amphitheater. We're going to tie that into the, basically, the septic system, the sewer system for the bathrooms. So we received the change order for $47,703.40 from Herschberg Mechanical for the plumbing contract, and I'm asking the board's approval of that change order.
Move for the approval, Change Order Number Five.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Assistant Township Manager?
Nothing to report.
Township Manager?
Yes, our fleet manager has asked that we get the board's authorization to send two vehicles to auction. They're the 2017 Chevy Tahoe and the 2012 Chevy Impala with over, close to 100 and over 100,000 miles.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Supervisors, Nancy?
I have nothing to report. Just want to give it to the crowd.
Judy?
Yeah, I'll just be brief, since the committees that I serve as a liaison on gave us a great update for tonight, and thank you to the volunteers again. We're so lucky to have you as part of the team here at the township. I would like a reminder of safety, since I've got a couple of years. Share the road with pedestrians, walkers, people on bicycles. If you're walking at twilight, please wear light-colored clothes, carry a flashlight, make yourself seen, so that if you're crossing a street, cars will see you. If you're riding a bicycle, wear a helmet. Put a flashing light on the back of your bike. Make sure that you're visible on the road. And if you're in a car driving, there's a four-foot rule, that you give four foot to the cyclist or the pedestrian that's there. So please give them space to go around. It's very scary if you're going quickly past someone on a bike when you're in a car. So that's that, just that safety moment. I'd also like to acknowledge and commend the landscaping at Terrain. It's actually quite lovely. I don't know if, you must notice it all the time if you live here in the township and you drive by. They've left a lot of their lawn go-to meadow, which is a great habitat for native plants, insects, and pollinators, good for the environment, and it's also quite lovely to look at. And that's all I have to report.
Barbara, would you like to?
Sure. Thank you to the Bucks County Symphony, who did an amazing opening concert for us of the Thompson Performing Arts Series at the CNN Bank Amphitheater on June 4th. First time ever that the Bucks County Symphony played outside in their 72-year history. So we were very fortunate, and it was very well-received, and hopefully they'll come back next year. The DART, you know, the DART's been around. It also goes west, goes south, and over the last few years, it's had a, let me tell you, 70 to 80% improvement and increase in ridership. So the DART West, South, and Doylestown is a tremendous success, and it's great musical support in the in the result there, especially since the DART is vital to our performing arts series. It brings everybody who can't drive, especially now we're limited in parking, to the concerts free of charge. So thank you to the DART. And I'm going to save my Bucks County Township officials' report on House bills and Senate bills to, in the interest of time, to our next meeting.
Okay. Dan?
Okay, since most people aren't here to listen to me talk, I'll be quick. I just want to thank some of our residents on Shady Retreat for the emails they sent us, very concerned about their roads, which we voted on this evening to have paved, and to everyone that's here tonight to speak with resident feedback and our volunteers that talked about our committees. That's how we run this township, is your feedback and our volunteer input. So, thank you.
Great. So we had our Touch a Truck event. It was such a success. It was beautiful. People came out with their families. I want to thank everybody who participated and who worked so hard for that. Our Park and Rec Department is phenomenal for coming up with these these events for our community. We also were at the, was it called the Beam Signing for the Crisis Center by Lenape Valley Foundation? Barbara and I attended, and it was a celebration of them starting the process of opening
Bright Pass.
Of Bright Pass?
Yeah.
Yes. Of Bright Pass, yes. It was a great event, it'll be a good resource for our township and we're very happy that they're there. I'm going to try and make this quick, but it is June and every June I do, I have a topic that I feel very strongly about that I talk about, so I would appreciate your patience. June is one of my favorite months of the year, partially because we celebrate Father's Day and it is Pride Month. For me, I get to celebrate both my father and the man he married, my stepdad, for both. As I was thinking of Pride Month, my focus left the parades and the bright, beautiful flags and went to more muted, tender times in LGBTQ life. My father, he's going to be 80 this year, fell very ill this January and he was hospitalized in a nursing facility for five months. My stepdad was there with him the whole time, comforting him, advocating for him, making sure he got the right medicine, the doctor's attention and better hospital food. He laid next to him and read the emails and texts that were sent from family. The gentle love in their eyes when I looked at, the way they looked at each other blew me away. I started thinking about 35 years ago when they first met, how the hospital may have denied his partner access, how my dad would have had to face this illness alone, how nurses wouldn't come into the room to inform my dad that his husband came by to bring him lunch. I think about how incredibly grateful I am that my stepdad could be there. The ability for my dad to be cared for and to care for his love, to be married to him was not won by accident. What many of us take for granted was from hard fought efforts from LGBTQ heroes like Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, Harvey Milk, Audrey Lord, Bayard Cusson and many more. It is celebrated in Pride Month with those rainbow flags and parades. So I just want to say, first of all, my dad watches sometimes, I love you, and my stepdad watches and thank you. And I want to say Happy Pride and Happy Father's Day to all those fathers out there, to my dad and to Rob, and thank you for listening to me. So on to the agenda, public hearing, the non-uniform defined contribution ordinance amendment. Would you like to speak on that, Mr.?
Certainly, this is a minor change to our pension ordinance to reflect the current practice of the township. The only change that's being made is we are eliminating the requirement that you need to be an employee for six months before you're eligible for the pension plan to reflect what actually has been the practice, which is you are eligible on your first day of employment. This was done previously, but it was done by resolution, so it is required that it be done by ordinance, so that's why it's in front of you this evening. It has been properly advertised and it is ready for adoption this evening.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I think we have to open a public hearing on it though.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is correct.
I apologize, yes.
Are there any comments on this, this item? Hearing none?
Okay.
Now I move for the, thank you.
I will second.
Adoption.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then there's also Burton's Grill of Doylestown LLC, intermunicipal transfer of liquor license.
And again, this is also a public hearing, I think the applicant is present. This is a public hearing for liquor license transfer application to transfer a restaurant liquor license number R-15478 from the municipality of New Hope Borough, Bucks County into Doylestown Township. The applicant is Burton's Grill of Doylestown LLC. The property which is the subject of this hearing is the application for an intermunicipal transfer, is located at Barn Plaza, 1745 Southeaston Road, Doylestown Township. This hearing is being held for the purposes of receiving comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within Doylestown concerning the applicant's intent to transfer a liquor license into the municipality of Doylestown Township. The application, which was submitted by Edward McHugh of Goldstein &amp; McHugh, was received by the township on May 27, 2025. The Pennsylvania Liquor Code requires that the township render a decision within 45 days of the submission of a complete application, or in the alternative, within an additional 60 days at the township's discretion. By letter dated June 3, 2025, my office notified the applicant's attorney of the township's intent to hold the hearing on the application this evening. We have reviewed and found the application to be substantially complete. The Pennsylvania Liquor Code sets forth certain mandatory provisions with respect to processing applications for intermunicipal transfers of liquor licenses. Section 4-461B3 of the Liquor Code provides that an intermunicipal transfer of a license must first be approved by the governing body of the receiving municipality when the total number of existing restaurant liquor licenses and eating place retail dispenser licenses in the receiving municipality equals or exceeds one license per 3,000 inhabitants. We have contacted the quoted department of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, they have confirmed that Doylestown Township has in excess of one license per 3,000 residents. Section 4-461B3 further states that upon request for an intermunicipal transfer, at least one public hearing shall be held by the municipal governing body for the purpose of receiving comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the municipality. Accordingly, the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board may not approve a new license unless the township first holds a public hearing and approves the intermunicipal transfer application. The township is required to render its decision by resolution or ordinance and we have provided the board this evening with a copy of a resolution approving the transfer and a copy of a resolution denying the transfer. The application has been advertised on June 5, 2025 and again on June 12, 2025. In addition, the applicant has provided public notices of tonight's hearing, consistent with the requirements of the Liquor Code and the township's requirements. The applicant is here this evening and represented by Edward McHugh of Goldstein &amp; McHugh. Mr. McHugh, you will now have the opportunity to present the application, any information, any evidence you would like and any testimony you would like, and then make yourself available and your witnesses available for questions from the board and members of the public. You may proceed, Mr. McHugh.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor, thank you for that introduction and good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair, my name is Ed McHugh and I am the liquor license attorney for Burton's Grill of Doylestown LLC. With me tonight is David Criss, who is the Vice President of Construction, and David Hoffman, who is the Director of Operations of Burton's Grill of Doylestown LLC and really Burton's in general. Burton's has a number of restaurants along the Eastern Seaboard and these gentlemen are here on their behalf. Mr. Solicitor, the way I would like to proceed tonight with your permission and with the board's permission is to give an attorney's presentation and maybe have the, Mr. Criss and Mr. Hoffman sworn in and they can maybe just adopt the facts that I present to you tonight and then just open it up for questions for the public and also the board.
That would be fine.
Okay, thank you. So Burton's Grill of Doylestown LLC, they have a lease in place for 1745 Southeaston Road within the township. They would like to open up a restaurant at this location, they would also like to serve alcoholic beverages at that restaurant location and to that end, as Mr. Solicitor stated, a public hearing has to be held in order for that license to come into the municipality. Burton's has entered into an agreement of sale to purchase the liquor license to bring it into the municipality. Prior to making the application to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, we're here before you tonight, asking for a resolution for you to approve that intermunicipal transfer. I do, I don't have any virtual exhibits, I do have just a number of exhibits that I'd like the board to consider tonight, if that's acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. We can pass them on.
We'll pass them on.
Yeah.
Go back to work.
Pass one back.
Just one more?
Yeah.
So those exhibits, if I can just continue, those exhibits contain a site plan, proposed menus, photographs, and I believe just an idea of, it gives you a little bit of a brief narrative of Burton's Bar and Grill.
It looks delicious.
So if, I'm just going to go over and review some facts about this operation and the location, in particular, the premises, the proposed license premises is approximately 6,200 square feet, it does have its outside seating area or proposed seating area of about 1,200 square feet. The capacity around the bar will be approximately 32 bar stools, there will be about 140 seats in the dining area and about 75 seats in the outside serving area, the patio which is immediately adjacent to the restaurant. The anticipated ratio of food versus alcoholic beverages will be 75% food and that's based on total sales, it's also based on the operations at the other locations that Burton's has, the other restaurant locations that Burton's are currently operating. The proposed restaurant hours will be Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. There'll be no dancing or live entertainment, there will be TVs inside the restaurant, there will be takeout food as part of the food sales, there will be no takeout beer nor takeout wine, no smoking permitted inside the premises, there will be dedicated parking spaces for the eat-in customers and also for takeout service, and that is also part of the lease of, for Burton's. Burton's will be a family oriented restaurant, the operation is similar to the other restaurants locations in New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Maryland, Virginia, South Carolina, North Carolina, Georgia and Florida. They've been in existence since 2005. There will be approximately about 75 employees, mostly part-time. The employees will have training and that training will include RAMP training, which is a program that is offered by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. It's an acronym that stands for Responsible Alcohol Management Program and it's an educational program offered by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, which teaches the service the proper and lawful way to dispense alcohol. Burton's will also have multiple transactional scanner devices that will be operational at all times during the time that they're, that they're open. This will be for the prevention of the service to minors. The policy will be anybody who appears under the age of 35 will be required to show that identification and that identification will be scanned. There's also will be surveillance camera system in place that will cover the interior and exterior of the premises. There are six active restaurant liquor licenses in Doylestown Township currently active. There was one in safekeeping at the time this agreement was signed, that restaurant liquor license was not available for sale at the time. And that is really the summary of my presentation. At this time, I would, I would open it up for questions.
First, if you could, if you could have each of your witnesses identify themselves and then indicate whether or not they agree with the summary that you've just given.
David Hoffman, Director of Operations for the Mid-Atlantic for Burton's Grill, and I agree 100%.
David Criss, Vice President of Construction, and yes, I concur with the statements.
Now you can open it up to questions from the board or from members of the public.
Are there any questions from the public? Yes, can you come up to the microphone, please?
Hi, Deirdre Sorago, a former resident of Doylestown but still an Upper Bucks resident. I used to work in hospitality for many, many years before I switched to the legal field. Question for you, you say 75 employees, most of which are going to be part-time. Why not full-time?
This is a liquor license transfer hearing, this is not to discuss their business practices.
Okay, never mind.
If you have questions about the transfer of the liquor license into the township, thank you.
All right, any questions from the board?
No.
Nope.
No, all right, well, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the transfer of the liquor license.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the details.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, our climate action plan. This will be presented by our Environmental Advisory Council, is anybody coming to listen?
I don't, yes.
Oh, that was already, yeah, that was already.
It's in the packet though.
Whether we're adopting it or not.
Yeah.
All right, move. Can I make a motion?
Well, let's move that one along. Okay. I'd like to make the motion, is that the next step?
Yeah.
Make the motion that we adopt the climate action plan?
I'll second it.
I'm the liaison.
I would like to have heard the presentation or some of the, my questions about the, your climate board or the climate action plan would be if the financial impact it could potentially have on our residents, some of the things they talked about was, you know, eliminating gas powered lawn mowers, things like that, and I, I struggle because it's really good intentions, but I think when we make things like an absolute, that we will pigeonhole ourselves in, so.
I don't think that that is part of what's discussed, it's guidelines and it's recommendations.
I understand, but it's a recommendation and I just think we just, I just wanted to say that, so.
Madam Chair, move to call the question.
All right, calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All right, new business, land development, 280 North Broad Street.
Yes, all the documents for the land development plans, development agreements, fees and everything associated with it have been provided to the board and the Solicitor's Office has reviewed all the documents for board consideration at this time.
I move for the approval of the Land Development Improvement Agreement of Arcadia, Doylestown, located 280 North Broad Street.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move also for the approval of the Stormwater Control and Best Management Practices of the same, 280 North Broad Street.
All in favor, oh, I need to say.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I also move for the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between Doylestown Township and Doylestown Borough regarding the development of the same parcel, 280 North Broad Street.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for your patience, I am now going to call the public comment on the Hart property. Please excuse me if I mispronounce your name. Emil Gambrogi, if you don't mind correcting it?
Sure, it's Emil Gambrozi.
I'm so sorry.
No, that's fine, no problem. As a member of the Bucks County Historical Society member, I do not approve of the development proposal for the Hart property. We should strive to protect the woodlands and historical buildings as part of preserving our past, as Henry Mercer stated in the Legacy of BCHS. Thank you very much for saying no to the land development and zoning change, we need to preserve our historic properties and woodlands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so everyone understands what the board is doing this evening, because it was just mentioned land development. This is not a land development application as of yet. The applicant, the equitable owner of the property has asked for the Board of Supervisors to consider a zoning change for the property, what's commonly referred to as a text amendment or a map amendment. This process that's being followed tonight is the one that Doylestown follows for all text amendments or map amendments. It's also very similar to what most municipalities in this area follow. There is a presentation and then the board moves this in front of the Planning Commission and that's when the process begins. The Planning Commission will hold a hearing or hearings reviewing the ordinance. If the applicant continues to want to pursue the application for a text amendment, they will come back to the board. The board can do one of three things, they can approve it, they can deny it, or they can decide not to hear it because the text amendment process is totally within the legislative discretion of the Board of Supervisors. Anything the board does tonight does not mean automatically that they're going to approve it or automatically that they're going to deny it, this is just a procedural step moving this forward. If it is approved. a procedural step moving this forward. If it is approved, then the applicant has to file a land development application, and it's during that land development application when issues related to stormwater, or traffic, or lighting, or whether or not there are any endangered species on the site will be heard. That will be what will be appropriate during the land development process. And then again, the applicant will be required to get their approvals, preliminary and final approvals, from the Board of Supervisors before they can begin building. Tonight, we're only talking about the use of the property, so questions related to lighting, traffic, stormwater, things of that nature are not appropriate for this evening. They will only be appropriate at the time of, of, of land development. So we're talking about the potential use of the property. The applicant is asking that it be essentially rezoned for a use that is permitted within the township, just not permitted on this site.
Okay. Thank you. Catherine Auerbach? Just either one. You can go to either one.
Yes. Good evening, Catherine Auerbach, and I'm probably a 50-year member of the Bucks County Historical Society, very concerned, very disappointed that anything of this nature has been suggested before you, and certainly your position tonight is just to see if it needs further review. I would question that we even go that far. The Bucks County Historical Society was gifted this. It's a matter of trust. It is a holding of the Bucks County Historical Society Mercer Museum, which is an accredited museum, but an action of sale of an important historical artifact can cause the society and the museum to lose its accreditation. It's very, very disturbing that this is coming before the board. I would hope that, that any action, that the thought of even changing the zoning is not at all appropriate. There's tremendous assets to the property, and by supporting the assets that are there, the township itself does its role, which is under oath to support the Pennsylvania Constitution, Article 1, Section 27, which states that citizens have the right to clean air, water, and to the preservation of natural, historical, and aesthetic environments for this generation and generations to come. So that's, that's what's before, whether you like history or not, whether you're a naturalist or whatever, or you like pavement and hardscaping, that's not, it's your role as a body to, to preserve our citizens' right to what's there, and also to support the historical society in moving in the right path to maintain its resources and, and carry on. There is no hardship. What they gain from this sale will be lost entirely with reconstructing another collections building. So there's, it's a zero gain for the historical society. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was two minutes exactly.
Can they use the timer? Can the timer be shown on the...
No, because I think that's just a minute. So I'm just putting out my phone.
Thank you.
Kim Trup?
Hello, my name is Kim Trup. I'm in Plumstead Township and student of Historic Preservation. I take it very seriously, but I, I must say, I do very much appreciate and I thank you for giving me an opportunity in a public forum for the community to come together and contribute and provide comment regarding the survivorship of the significant historic resources for the region. I am here on behalf of both the Hart Track and Font Hill, and I am serving as a voice in this discussion. So I'm a voice for the resource, not myself personally, although I do believe sincerely in preservation. I will add here that I do not enjoy being here. This is unpleasant, and I don't think, it's a lot of fun to come and have to speak and involve myself in a project that's creating conflict from a gift that was meant to create joy. As for due process, I'm a believer in that as well, but I see no reason that this proposal requires further attention, as, as well noted by Mrs. Auerbach, and it is an inappropriate ask to rezone the Hart Track. It's not our place to renegotiate a trust and debate a new use for a property that has already been spoken for many years ago. It's rude. Simply stated, we're out of line. This is wrong. As a gift to the community, we are both recipients, and more importantly, we are stewards, and this is an important role, because it's a means. That means that we're benefactors and that we're stakeholders and that we're responsible for the passage of these artifacts into the future. Again, I take issue with our interference with the wishes of George Mitchner Hart and Henry Chapman Mercer, and I challenge our beloved Bucks County Historical Society to do better. These historic resources are a tremendous point of pride, and they deserve our voice, our attention, and our respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Doreen Stratton.
Thank you. As a third-generation resident of Doylestown Borough, I hope you will consider all concerns about the zoning classification of the Hart Track. Other speakers are speaking about describing the fragility of the track's topography using more knowledgeable terms than I, but as a third-generation Doylestown Borough resident, I witnessed the evolution of the landscape at the bottom of South Main Street. When you look at the track from a Google map, and that is a lovely Google map, but missing are the 99 houses that are clustered up against the freeway. The mature and healthy trees in the Hart Track that remain created small ponds back in the day. And a letter to the editor by, from preservationist Catherine Alback talks about a multi-generation, she's a multi-generation resident of Bucks County, and some of the things she mentioned in a letter to the editor was images of the past as well as substantial wetlands act as a large pond, large sponge to absorb the water runoff of the southern quadrant. Hidden on the Hart Ranch, Hart Track is an 18th-century farmhouse of stone and mortar where people lived to till, plant, and harvest the land which fed the community. Will this iconic Bucks County treasure withstand the construction of 36 luxury homes? Will the delicate artifacts in the onsite storage facility survive relocation? Will the topography experience environmental reversal when all the trees are gone?
Excuse me, Stratton, your two minutes is up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Please look at this carefully. This is a treasure in our area. We are disappearing land every day. Thank you.
I'll pass now. It was for the next public meeting.
Thank you. Mary Jo Menendez?
Let me start my stop budget.
I'll give you a gentle reminder.
Good evening. I stand tonight to ask you to refuse to send on to the Planning Commission the rezoning from I-2 institutional to R-4 residential. I'm an attorney, and I prepared for this meeting by looking at takings law in Pennsylvania and land use regulations and Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code and all of the things that lawyers do to prepare for things like this, and then I realized that doesn't really matter a hoot. What really matters, and what I really want to talk to you about, is where I came from six years ago. I came from urban sprawl in the I-25, I-70 corridor in Colorado where I lived for 32 years. I've lived in the country when I moved to my home in between Golden and Arvada, green pastures and no stoplights until you hit the town limits. When I left for the greener pastures of Bucks County in 2019, there were 22 stoplights between the town of Arvada and my house. Our properties were not as old and storied and beautiful as yours in Bucks County, but there were old ranch houses and corrals and vast ranges and acreage. Because of land use decisions based on modern exigencies, those properties were carved up and forever changed despite the many pledges that the rural and historical character would be retained. And the result, friends, landscapes that looked like macabre jigsaw puzzles with pieces out of different boxes, and preserved barns and houses that may have maintained their structures but lost the spirit of the land and the place due to intrusions of time that can never be restored and can never be integrated. Horses that used to run through huge pastures run around in little dirt tracks now in circles. That's what urban sprawl does. That's what lack of planning does. I was a judge in that municipality, and they made those land use plans 40 years ago before they saw what the destruction looks like, and you don't have to do that today. I spend all of my days on the weekends and nights out in this beautiful world, looking at the buildings, not at the buildings, but at the properties as a whole. Allowing the residential construction of this property will take away the character and the essence of the land, and no amount of trying to fit the good and the bad is going to regain that essence.
Thank you, Ms. Menendez.
I need to say one more thing, and I've timed this. I'm an executive director of a nonprofit in Horsham. It's a 501(c)(3), and it's been a challenging year for all of us. Funding has come and gone, and capital purchases have been postponed, but I know this. If we rob Peter to pay Paul, all we're left with is Peter doesn't have any money, and Paul's going to need some again soon.
Thank you.
If we sell, if, it's posted that the Font Hill Castle and the Mercer Museum will be edified by this sale. Those are beautiful places, and they're...
Ms. Menendez, I'm sorry, your two minutes is up.
They are works of art, but they are not the wild places of beauty that Bucks County should keep. I ask on behalf of your citizenry that you do not change the legacy and the character for a temporary bump in the checkbook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask, out of respect for all the other speakers here, that we try and keep to that two-minute mark. I really do appreciate it. Beth, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
Mininger.
Mininger, thank you. You could state your name and municipality.
Actually, my name is Mary Elizabeth Mininger, but the world knows me as Beth, and some of you here may not be happy with me tonight, because I was the person, one person who posted on Facebook about this meeting. But I first want to say that I have nothing against Zavetta and the quality work that he does, and if anybody was going to develop this track, he's probably towards the top of the list. So I'm not here to argue that. What I'm concerned about is the change of zoning. First of all, there's a lot of people, because I've been getting a lot of messages, that still believe or believe the zoning on this property is industrial, and that this is going to save it from warehouse or other industrial potential. It is institutional, which says in your zoning, "The intent of the I-2 institutional district is to allow for the continued use of properties for historic and cultural institutions." And the very last part of this zoning says it is designed for the purpose of preserving historical and cultural landmarks. That's just the shortest part of it. So just that clarification was important. I have understood that there are wetlands on the property. Some people say there's none. I've also understood that there's American chestnut on the property. I have no idea if that's true. My big concern is that if the zoning is changed, that's it. You can't go back. And zoning, I've seen this. I actually was, well, first of all, I'm a resident of this area, have been for 62 years. I was born in this area. It's near and dear to my heart. I also was in real estate for many, many years, not active, but it's been over 40 years I've been licensed, and it's my heart and soul. I represented developing properties. I represented sellers. Once a zoning change is made, you're not going to go back. And if, if something were to happen to Zavetta, the Zavetta organization, something changes, all of a sudden, who could possibly come in now that you have new zoning? Toll Brothers, Ryan Homes, or, or worse? It's an unknown. You change the zoning, you open up a can of worms, even though the intentions are all good by Zavetta.
Ms. Mininger, your time's up, the two minutes. Do you have a final sentence or two?
Um, yeah, the only last thing is I am concerned that there wasn't enough put out to the community by the Bucks County Historical Society so that there could potentially be buyers of this property with a preservation easement to maintain the property as it is and restore the house. I've received two comments, private comments through my Facebook post, asking if they could buy the property, preserve the house, and live there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren McGeeery?
I don't think they heard you.
Lauren McGeeery? Oh, you're choosing that microphone.
To her point, I just want to maybe bring up...
Did we get the town that you live in? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Doylestown Township, Lauren McGeeery. Can we possibly fundraise? There's got to be a way to, you know, get the historical society the money that they need, and I think it's a little premature to just jump to the conclusion that we have to sell it to a builder, and it's just a thought. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Mary Ann Davies?
I'm...
You're good?
Someone else will agree.
Perfect. Thank you. Deidra Cerrego?
Okay, now I'm in the right thing to speak. I am Deirdre Cerrego. I am Buckingham Township. Thank you. I'm gonna, Beth, you are so right. I just found out about this meeting a half an hour, 6:30. It gave me no time to do any preparation as far as with logistics or anything zoning or anything like that. So I am going to speak to you just solely from the heart. I do want to touch on Jennifer. I was raised by two dads as well.
Yeah.
So I, I totally mirror everything you said, and I, I just want to thank you for that. I have two incredible parents as well, who I love, and, you know, my dad has had knee surgery and is not doing too great, and I'm very fortunate that my stepfather Jimmy was able to be there, you know, every step of the way. Anywho, my story and my plea to you to please do not pass this on. I beg of you. There's not enough of us here to tell you, because we were not told. So do not hold that against us. Do not think that we are ill-prepared or under-prepared. I'm originally from New York, born and raised. I've lived in five states, and I'm 50. I have to tell you, I moved to Doylestown originally years ago. I fell in love with Bucks County, specifically Doylestown. It spoke to me in a way that I can't even tell you. I love American history. I love the architecture here. I love all the stone homes. I love all the farms. I love what people are doing here, what they've done here, and what they're preserving. I live in a stone house from the early 1800s, so I'm walking the walk of how much I love this. Even though I no longer live in Doylestown, I shop here. I have friends here, and I love to support the local communities, and I love to drive and look at the land, the cornfields, the ponds, the trees, everything. That is what brings people here, because it speaks to your heart. Why do you think we have the tourism we have? Why do you think we've had the influx of people moving here? We want country. We don't... We don't want to take pink parking, pink, oh God, what's that Joni Mitchell song? Pink paradise, build, put up a parking lot, stop. We've had so much development in Doylestown. Look at the Martin, look at 333 Broad Street. They're disasters. That is unsustainable and you cannot afford to live there. What is it, 36 apartments at what, $3,000 for 1,200 square feet?
Can you take it down?
I'm sorry, I'm Italian-American, so we're passionate. It's a cultural thing.
I also have to say your two minutes are up.
Okay, please, please, please do not push this forward. I beg of you.
Thank you. Steven Colgan, I hope I'm reading that right.
I thought there was a sign and I don't have it.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you for being here. Mr. Zavetta, are you interested in making some statement or?
You know, I just want to reiterate what has already been said by our solicitor and the chairman. We are not making any decisions regarding zoning tonight or any time in the near future this matter. If I have anything to do it, we'll go to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission does what it does. We take a lot, we take a lot from our Planning Commission and they will look at every aspect of it. It is in that forum that everyone here should go and talk and address your concerns. The, I'm not quite sure why there's an issue about Bucks County Historical Society selling this property or not, whether they're allowed to do it or not, whether they're breaching some kind of understanding with the heirs or not. That's not our bailiwick. That's not for us to decide. If there's an issue with what the Bucks County Historical Society is doing, the presumed seller, then that is a matter for a court, not for this jurors, not for us. In this, in municipal government in Doylestown Township, we respect the residents, of course, but we also are, we also respect those who would seek to do business here and they have a right to buy and sell, just like you have a right to buy and sell any property you would like to have. Now, like I said, it's not for us to decide the zoning. We're not going to do that. We're not going to do it anytime in the near future. We'll take it to the Planning Commission if that's the move on the board tonight and they will, like I said, look and see and make a recommendation or not and then we move from there. But it's in that forum that you will have the opportunity to bring all of the things, all of the concerns you have. Again, though, we don't decide what's the, whether Bucks County Historical Society can or cannot sell their property. That's not for us to decide.
Also, I want to add that the Planning Commission is an advisory commission, so what they do, and I think it's, I think it's what you guys are looking for, is that they'll look to see what the best opportunity for zoning is for this property, whether it's to stay the same or change. And we are all in the supportive of preserving historical buildings. We're all supportive of the environment. We all want to do that work and our Planning Commission is a group of very talented, very knowledgeable people that do this all the time. So if it goes to the Planning Commission, it's not stating that we're moving it forward because we're going to approve a zoning change. It just means we're going to put the people that know how all of this works to work so they can research it for us, bring it to us and give us their recommendation and then we would decide. So please know, an I-2, which is what it's zoned at now, may not be the best zoning to preserve any buildings. It may not be the best zoning to, for the environment. It may not be the best use for it, or it may. But either way, we want to have, we want to have our Planning Commission or we will be voting on whether we want our Planning Commission to study it for us. So that's what it is. We want to make sure that we do our due diligence. So with that.
Thanks. If there are no other comments from the board or past practice has been unless there is an objection from the majority of the board, this will be moved to the Planning Commission. Do any board members-
I have an objection. I would, my thought is this, everybody's here tonight, whether they, we're not making a decision about the zoning, but I think, first of all, I would say probably if anyone is going to build, Mr. Zavetta is the gold standard. So it would be an honor to have anything he does in our community and in our township. I think by moving it to the Planning Board, it's a nod from our board stating that we're open to changing the zoning.
Absolutely not.
That is, that is my, that is my opinion.
Absolutely not.
I, like I said, I'm struggling because, like I said, you have a gold standard. I think there's a lot of emotion about it. I asked our board if we could have an exec session to talk about it and understand the property. One of the things I wanted to know and I'm going to ask right now is that when Doylestown Hunt was built, was that part of the Hart Track as well, Stephanie?
No, it was not. The Burpees owned Doylestown Hunt at the time.
Those Burpees, okay. I couldn't remember. Thank you for clarifying that.
It was part of the Burpee Track and I was new to the township at that point in time, but I recall that at that time, the township was working with Charlie Sturgis, the owner, I think it was Heritage Development, and they were going through zoning amendments to allow for the R4 zoning district at that point in time to allow for the smaller lots, single homes on the amount of land that the majority of homes in Doylestown Hunt have. So that was a big discussion. It was their, it was the Burpee Track, it was their gardens, it was where they did a lot of their research. That property, of course, got cut off by the bypass. I believe at some point in time, it was actually all the way to New Burton Road where the existing bald property is, which was the Burpee Homestead, got cut off, but that was part of zoning changes and the Hart Track was separate and it was actually zoned R4 at the time, but when the Historical Society obtained it and they put the storage unit, the prefab storage units that's there where they store some artifacts, that's when we changed that zoning, created the I-2 for that in Font Hill.
Thank you for that history. I knew you'd have it. Thank you, Stephanie. I just had to express how I feel about it. I'm about preserving the past. I grew up in Bucks County. I think everybody on the board is committed to doing the right thing. There's different ways of viewing it, but again, because planning is a volunteer committee, I know they are excellent at what they do, the board needs to step up and make those decisions for the public and be transparent.
So just to, just to clarify, the Planning Commission will not be making the decision. This board will be making a decision ultimately. They are an advisory board, so I just want to make sure that that's very clear because I think there might be a little miscommunication there.
They make the recommendation.
Can we entertain comments from Mr. Zavetta at this time?
Would you like to make, oh, I do want to, I do want to, if any of you haven't watched the April 2nd, 2024 meeting starting at the 11-minute mark, I please ask you to do that because we had a wonderful presentation here that day that actually answered some of those questions that you had today. So just go on our webpage, you'll see the board meetings and there's video there, April 2nd, 2024, when we first, when we first were presented with this opportunity.
Mrs. Santos Sicilia mischaracterized the role of this board. If we send something to the Planning Commission, it's because they're very smart and informed and they have an expertise. They'll look at everything. They'll look at the requests for the zoning, look at the zoning, look at so many of the factors that we, we need to consider and they will make a recommendation. As Ms. Heron said, we do, they do not make a decision. They'll make a recommendation and then we will decide. But just because we send it to the Planning Commission is not axiomatic that it's going to be something that we approve. So I want to make, make that clear to you all in contrast to what Mrs. Santos Sicilia alluded to.
Thank you.
I'm just expressing my, my feeling about it, but, and I appreciate everybody on the board's different thoughts about how they view the tonight's process. I thank everyone for coming out. And Mr. Zavetta, I'm sorry you're stuck in the middle of this because you are, like I said, the gold standard.
So I think the chairwoman and Mr. Clark properly framed the limited issue that's in front of us all this evening and that is to whether or not you want to refer the formal application that we've now submitted seeking both a zoning amendment and a text change that would impact the way this property would be developed.
I'm sorry, could, could you please introduce yourself?
I'm Ed Murphy. I represent Rich Zavetta.
Thank you.
So that is why we are here. As the chairwoman just indicated, we are approaching the one-year anniversary of when this project was first introduced to the township, July 15 of last year. And chairwoman's correct that at that time, Rich made a very detailed presentation about the background of the property and his intentions for it. Since then, as I think everybody knows, we have spent multiple hours with the Planning Commission, with staff, developing an ordinance which has been subject to multiple revisions and a final draft, which is what, if the board so chooses tonight, would be referred out to the various boards and commissions, both inside the township and outside, meaning Bucks County Planning Commission as well. So there is a process, which Mr. Clark mentioned, that would occur, that all of these issues, both spoken tonight and unspoken tonight, but which have been reported elsewhere, are all going to be vetted. So I think, I don't know if tonight's the night for Rich to, again, to defend the character assassination he's suffering in the social media platforms where he has been vilified for all kinds of things that aren't true. Whether or not we want to have that debate or conversation tonight is up to you. I know Rich would like to at least speak to those particular issues of which he's very offended by what he's read and heard about. But we're here tonight for the limited issue of whether or not you want to refer this matter to the various boards and commissions for further discussion and vetting. So I'll defer to the board if they want to hear from Rich. I don't know that it's an appropriate forum to do it, but given the nature of the commentary tonight, you may want to set the record straight yet again, although I think we've been abundantly clear about it, including most recently, Rich hosted an open house where he invited the adjacent residential communities to Aldi Mansion to have a conversation about the plan. And there was good attendance. I'm not saying everybody was there, but there was good attendance and the intention of Rich is to be as transparent and as forthcoming as possible about what his intention is with regard to this property. So that's where we stand tonight. We can either talk further about it or the board can determine what its next step would be.
I think we should just-
Mr. Murphy, if, if the board moves us on to the Planning Commission, at the Planning Commission meeting, you and Mr. Zavetta will present the proposed plan for the site, correct? Correct. And you'll probably have your engineer there and you'll have some other people who are there and you'll talk generally about what the plan is and what the, why the text amendment was drafted in the manner in which it was, correct? Correct. And we would talk not just generally, Mike, but specifically about all the issues that we've heard about, accurate or otherwise, and we will attempt to discuss and vet and explain and dispel, as the case may be, those questions. And then if you eventually come back here, if the board schedules it for a hearing to adopt the ordinance, they can do that in two steps if they wanted to. They could have a vote to authorize advertising of the ordinance and then there'd be a second hearing where the board would consider the adoption of the ordinance and that's the process as you understand it? That's correct. And if it's adopted, as I indicated before, you have to come back for land development and at that point in time, Mr. Zavetta will have to talk about- Stormwater and- Traffic. Correct. Pindy searches on certain types of wildlife that may be there and things of that nature, correct? Correct. Okay. And I'm assuming when you say the things that Mr. Zavetta is being accused of, you're saying that things that he's planning on doing with the property, but really that would be more appropriate at a subsequent time. Would you agree? I would. Okay. And Madam Chair, members of the board, I would, I would think that this is probably not the appropriate forum for Mr. Zavetta to answer social media commentary or anything here this evening. The point of this tonight is to decide whether or not the board wants to send this to the Planning Commission where the process of review of this plan will, will begin in earnest.
I do have one comment to make, Madam Chair. I am the acting liaison for our planning committee, so I just wanted to explain some of my thinking process with what you're all discussing right now. Trust me, I'm listening to everyone who spoke, writing down notes. My concern is that if we don't do this zoning change and the Bucks County Historical Society is still adamant about selling this property to someone who can use it as an I-2, then this will continue to move along. Why I'm mentioning this is our Planning Commission is the place for a lot of people who don't feel like you had any voice in this so far, to voice your concerns and help shape the process. I've seen it happen with a recent property we had, the 33 O'Neil property, where it went through various iterations of a commercial state for a couple of years until they worked with, until the builders worked with residents to find something that worked for all parties involved. I don't know if the Bucks County Historical Society will continue to pursue selling this, but when I look at what we can do and work with them and work with the community, the Planning Commission is the best forum for you to take part and have a say in how this is shaped.
With that, what's the mood of the board?
I just want to say one thing to Mr. Zavetta. I think what you do is a gold standard and you should not be vilified or by anyone in the community because you bring, like I said, such a gold standard to the community. I think what people need to understand is this is a decision made by the Bucks County Historical Society and you're now being put in the middle of that. So people need to separate the emotion and understand that there's a process that's happening and it's right here. People's voices are being heard and it now is up to the board to decide how they want to move forward. So please be respectful because we do want good business and we do want to be good community partners and it's really important to recognize the difference.
Again, board members, as has been our practice, unless there is a majority of the board who objects, this will be moved to the Planning Commission. It will be duly advertised. As I'm hearing it this evening only, Ms. Santos Sicilia has objected, so unless I'm wrong, I think this matter will be moved forward to the Planning Commission and we can move on with the meeting.
I think that's right. Any-
Do we need an actual vote?
We do not. That has not been our practice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Please, please watch our calendar, come to the Planning Commission and make your voices heard there as well. Thank you.
I'm going to wait for a couple of minutes till the room clears.
They should, they should be leaving quietly because we have business to it.
He's getting the phone.
They need to be moving out quietly so we can get all the business.
They're doing it. They're-
Everybody, please leave the room if you're finished here quickly so we can continue our meeting.
We're still in a meeting.
I'm sorry, sir, we're still in the meeting. All right, next on our agenda. Next on our agenda is baseline water study.
No, Furlane.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the Furlane exchange. Furlane property.
No, it's, it's all-
Excuse me, if everyone could discontinue the conversation in the room. If you want to have a conversation, please go outside.
Thank you.
I move for the extension as requested by Furlane.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Baseline water study, Gilmore.
Judy's here this evening on behalf of Toby Kessler of Gilmore. We have the proposal for the baseline water study. This is about the grant that Mr. Van Houten talked about earlier and if we would have the recommendation to engage with Gilmore along with the lab that would conduct the work. Judy, do you want to just give a brief overview?
It's in our packet.
Right. Judy's here to answer any questions or-
Yeah, I move that we approve the services contract to Gilmore and Associates and the laboratory services contract to Euro Finns, Finns Environmental.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for providing all the information so we could be informed.
Thank you. Thank you. Septa Funding Support Resolution. Barbara, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would, oh, yes. As you know, an aide, I mean, a strong proponent of mass transit and I ask that we move for the execution of the resolution. we move for the execution of the resolution supporting the Southeastern Transportation Authority's need for continuing funding and support.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for putting that together.
Okay, we also have, now we're on to the zoning hearing board. Recommendation to leave this matter to the zoning hearing board. Treasurers' report. Has everybody had a chance to read?
Move for the approval of the Treasurers' report for June 17, 2025.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bills list.
I move for the approval of the bills list for June 17, 2025.
I'll second.
Excellent. All right, public comment--
All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving along. Is there public comment on any non-agenda items? Okay. Thank you, everyone, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Documents to be signed.